All right, good morning, everyone. It is 10 o'clock. We are gonna go ahead and get started. My name is Tess Stovall, and I am the Executive Director of the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission, and I will be presiding here at today's hearing. First, I want to thank members of the public for being here today, representatives from both Jackson Madison and American Classical Academy. We appreciate your time, and I want to specifically note, we know the amount of effort it takes to go through the application process, both as an applicant and the reviewing district. We also acknowledge the time it takes to go through an appeal process, and so we just want to thank you all for both of your efforts. We at the commission take this process very seriously. This is one of 13 public hearings that we are hosting and conducting over the month of September. We hold each appeal to the same standard and conduct the same process across each appeal. We appreciate everyone's time to be here today, and we look forward to hearing both from the parties as well as members of the public. Tennessee Code Annotated 4913108 allows an amended application that has been denied by a local Board of Education to appeal that decision to the Charter Commission. In the case that we are talking about today, Jackson Madison County School Board, but it's denied the amended application for American Classical Academy on July 14th of 2022. American Classical Academy then appealed that denial to the Charter Commission, which we received on July the 25th of 2022. We notified both the sponsor and the local board of this hearing. Information was posted on the Charter Commission's website. It was also published in the Jackson Sun on August the 25th, and was given to any individual that reached out for information about public meetings. This meeting is open to the public. Pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 4913108, in an appeal, the Charter Commission shall conduct a de novo, on the record, review of the proposed charter school's application to determine if the local Board of Education's decision was contrary to the best interests of the students, the LEA, or the community. To fulfill the commission's responsibility in an appeal, as required by law, in addition to this hearing, a committee of qualified individuals will conduct a de novo review of the amended application, and using the state scoring rubric, will independently rate the application. The committee will also conduct a capacity interview with the sponsor to assess their ability to operate the proposed school. The committee will then prepare a report, which I will consider when making my recommendation to the Charter Commission. The Charter Commission will then meet to consider my recommendation, which will include the findings of this hearing, the review committee's report, and a comprehensive review of the full record by commission staff. Pursuant to Charter Commission Policy 2.000, the commission will consider my recommendation, but it is not bound by it. If the commission finds that the amended application meets or exceeds the metrics outlined in the Department of Education scoring rubric, and that approval of the charter school is in the best interests of the students, the LEA, and the community, then the commission may approve that charter school application. If the commission approves the application, then the commission would become the authorizer in the LEA. That is unless the LEA and the charter school mutually agree for the LEA to be the authorizer. In the case of this appeal, the commission will make a decision on American Classical Academy Madison during a meeting on October the 5th of 2022. Details about that meeting, which will take place in Nashville, and how to listen and livestream that meeting, will be available on the Charter Commission's website. I'd like to start with a quick overview of today's proceedings. We will begin with opening presentations. So I will be giving both the local board and the sponsor up to 15 minutes to present. I will then take the opportunity to ask questions of both the sponsor and the LEA. We will then have an opportunity for a public comment. Only those individuals who signed up in advance before we reach capacity will be called. We do have 15 individuals who have signed up in advance today, and each person will be given a maximum of two minutes to make a comment. I do want to note that we have our public comment period on this appeal runs for the next week. We do accept written comments. Both written and oral comments are weighed the exact same, and all of that information is provided to our commissioners as a part of their record in this appeal. We have blank paper available should you want to leave a written comment with a member of the staff today. We also have a QR code that you can scan, and it takes you directly to our website to leave a written comment, or you may visit the commission's website and leave a comment directly there. The public comment period on this appeal will run for the next week, so in order for comments to be considered by me and my recommendation, please get those comments in before next At the conclusion of the public comment period, we will then move into closing statements. We will give both parties up to 10 minutes for a closing statement. I do want to note that we are recording this hearing. That will be provided to our commissioners as a part of their record, and we do have a staff member that will be taking notes. We are ready to start our presentations. We are gonna start first with the local Board of Education, who will have up to 15 minutes. We do have a staff member that will be setting a timer, so if you do hear the alarm, that means your time is up, and we will go ahead and recognize you all. If you could introduce yourselves for the record as you begin speaking, we would appreciate it.
Dr. Brian Chandler, Jackson Madison County School System.
I'm not sure the mic, your mic is...
I said it would be on it automatically. Just needs to be closer. Is that better?
Better.
Okay. Dr. Brian Chandler, Jackson Madison County School System, Executive Principal at Northside High School. Good morning, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to address the Department of Education Charter School Commission as we discuss American Classical Academy Madison Charter School Appeal. On behalf of the local Board of Education of the Jackson Madison County School System, JMCSS, and the Review Committee, Dr. Vivian Williams, Deputy Superintendent, and myself, Dr. Brian Chandler, former Chief Operating Officer and currently Executive Principal at Northside High School, we will address the committee on these matters. During this process, Dr. Williams and I will highlight why Jackson Madison County School System's Charter Review Committee was unable to recommend American Classical Academy Madison amended charter school application. As JMCSS reviewed the application, we found that three or four sections had key items that the LEA rated as either partially meets the standard, and one essential item as does not meet the standard. As a result, according to the Quality Charter Authorizing Standards and Policy 6.111, applications that merits a recommendation for approval should satisfy each of the criteria. Based on these outcomes, Jackson Madison County School System Board voted to deny approval of the amended application of American Classical Academy Madison. During this review, Jackson Madison County School System will only highlight specific areas of concerns in the American Classical Academy Madison Charter application due to time limitations. Although we do not plan to discuss all areas of concern, the most impactful on student achievement and student safety are in our review. Therefore, as we review each section and discuss key elements within each, we plan to illustrate why the LEA deemed these sections rated at the partially meets standards or does not meet standards levels. The key areas that we plan to address are the academic focus and plan, academic performance standards, special populations and at-risk students, facilities, waivers, governance, financial planning capacity. At this time, my colleague, Dr. Vivian Williams, will address Section 1, and I will address Sections 2 and 3. At the close of our time, Dr. Williams will present a brief summation. Again, we want to thank you for your time and allowing us to speak on behalf of Jackson Madison County Local LEA. Thank you.
Good morning, Vivian Williams, Deputy Superintendent, Jackson Madison County School System. At this time, I would like to address two areas, the academic plan, design, and capacity in particular, and two key points on the academic performance standards, 1.3 and 1.4. I have three key points. The plan lacks compelling evidence of a description of how the academic program will remediate students' non-performance and underperformance. Included in the academic plan for American Classical Academy Madison is the statement that reads, "The success of every student will depend on his or her consistent effort and perseverance." It is assumed that if students work hard, they will learn. There is no explicit plan or description of how American Classical Academy Madison will provide remediation or incorporate research-based interventions for underperforming students. There is no plan to address learning loss in response to closing achievement gaps or how the school will support struggling students. Point number two, there is minimum reference to how the academic plan supports all students or how the plan is focused on equitable learning opportunities for all students. The academic plan referenced students with intelligence and work ethic effort to be successful. The principle of public education is about fairness and encompasses a wide variety of educational models, programs, and strategies that should support all learners regardless of their intellectual ability or economic status. American Classical Academy Madison's plan does not support creating an equitable learning environment where every Jackson Madison County student would have access to what they need. All students do not require the same structure and support to be successful. Point number three, the crosswalk of the identified curriculum materials and Tennessee standards indicate a misalignment of learning expectations with the curriculum lacking rigor and relevance. The curriculum choices remain limited primarily to Anglo-Saxon, European, and Western civilization. The curriculum choice does not reflect the diversity or culture of the Jackson Madison County School System or the larger community. Example from the Tennessee Department of Ed, the Tennessee Education Accelerator Model Team Rubric indicates that to ensure the best possible instruction every day, curriculum should be aligned to state standards. It should build on prior knowledge of students. It should be relevant to the students' lives, connected to their life experiences, and incorporate students' interests and cultural heritage. The current demographics of Jackson Madison County are as follows: Asian 2%, African-American 58%, Hispanics 9%, whites 29%, and others 2%. American Classical Academy Madison plan lacks a strategic focus on Tier 1, 2, and 3 instruction, academic performance, and outcomes for students. 1.9, special populations and at-risk students. The question still remains unanswered as to how American Classical Academy Madison will provide a continuum of services for students with disabilities, whose families may choose this option. There is no reference to providing intensive interventions or serving students with significant cognitive or physical disabilities. The plan lacks clarity on how students with disabilities, as well as English-language learners, will receive direct services, and there is no mention of how students with identified disabilities, autism, intellectual disability, et cetera, or economically disadvantaged students will be served. Currently, 70.25% of the district's students are economically disadvantaged, and 17% are identified as students with disabilities and have an individual educational plan. Last point, the academic plan states that IEP verbiage will be evaluated regularly against the progress of the student, and that all students will be responsible for mastery of the same skills and concepts, and will be required to take the same assessments regardless of grouping, using accommodations as required by the IEP as applicable. All students with IEP are not required to take the same assessments. The Tennessee Department of Education allows for the use of simplified curriculum, alternative state assessments, portfolios, and alternative diplomas. Additionally, what is IEP verbiage? Per Webster, it can be a profusion of words of little or vague content, dazzard, maze, or evasive content. Do we want IEPs for our most vulnerable students that are vague and evasive? Can American Classical Academy Madison educate all students? At minimum, an IEP should outline the program of specialized instruction, supports, and services for students to make progress and thrive in school, not just contain IEP verbiage. American Classical Academy Madison's application lacks clarity in serving our special population and at-risk students. Dr. Chandler, thank you.
At this time, I will address Sections 2 and Section 3, and give some of the major highlights of why the local LEA was not able to approve of the application at this time. 2.1, governance. The majority and the entirety of the listed board members are not local residents. As of the last notification, only two board members are even from this geographic region. As a result, parents will not have a single governing body representative that resides in Madison County. Therefore, parents may have a difficult time engaging with any of the governing body on key issues that affect the students and the school. Plus, the plan does not indicate how those board members will be trained to fulfill their duties. 2.1 Startup Plan and 2.3 Facilities. To date, the proposed charter has not named or identified a facility or facility site. Without a proposed site, Jackson Madison County School System is not able to evaluate if appropriate space is allocated, if the site or the building meets Tennessee Fire and Life Safety Codes for K-12 students, or if any needed renovations are necessary to meet life safety standards for Tennessee. As a result, any timeline would be aggressive for a 2023 school opened without a building site designated. This deficiency in the proposal is also reflected in the startup plan. In addition, if any existing facility is found at date, renovations may be slow due to the international supply chain issue, again making a 2023 school opening a very aggressive timeline. 2.4 Human Capital. Two areas of concern should be noted for this section. Firstly, the application discusses the need to recruit and retain a diverse workforce that is reflective of Jackson, Tennessee. However, the plan states that the proposed staff will have the following: All should have a broad understanding of the classical liberal arts, its root in the Western tradition, and its historical presence in American education prior to the 20th century. You find this in Section 2.4, Section C, page 132. This is representative of a classic educational model. As a result, since many local and regional colleges do not train this method, it may limit hiring and recruiting local candidates for the positions. Second, since the entire nation is experiencing a teacher shortage, all qualified staff may be difficult to recruit. Therefore, the leading sentence under the question of "How will you recruit and hire", Section 2.4, Subsection D, page 133, American Classical states, "American Classical will cast a large net to identify the best candidates." This may fall short due to its lack of specificity to provide quality of diversity amongst its staff. Plus, the proposed plan does not list any incentives to attract hard-to-fill subjects. Section 2.7 Transportation, Section 2.8 Food Services, and Section 2.9 Additional Operations. Based on historical data and Jackson Madison County's free and reduced district status, barriers to transportation, food, and technology are a noted need for the majority of Jackson Madison County students and families. The American Classical Madison proposal indicates that ideally, American Classical Jackson Madison will contract with the district for these programs. This was also stated by American Classical Academy in their site visit to Jackson Madison County School System. However, Jackson Madison County School System has experienced the same nationwide hiring difficulties for these and other support services. As a result, Jackson Madison County School System may not be able to contract with American Classical, leaving this an area that they have not determined how they will fulfill. 2.11 Waivers. American Classical Academy listed 18 individual waivers in its appeal. In this section, American Academy contradicts other portions of the proposal by indicating that they are seeking waivers for 18 requirements that they obligated to follow in the original plan. One example is Section 2.4, Subsection F, page 134, where it states, "American Classical Academy will utilize the TEAM model to assess teachers' performance." However, in the waiver section, page 159, American Classical requests a waiver of TCA 49-5, 5205, and SB Rule 0520-01-01 for the general requirements for teacher evaluation. 12.2 Capacity. There was no information provided in the plan for capacity. 3.1.2 Charter School Financing. The plan does not detail how financial policies are to be complied with, including those required by GASB and not FASB, as most not-for-profit entities are regulated by. Rules set by the Tennessee Audit Manual are not addressed for how contractors will be selected as it relates to bids, quotes, and/or purchasing processes. Plus, there is not a contingency plan to meet financial needs should the noted grants or other revenues listed come through for lower amounts than anticipated or not at all. So these are reasons the appeal was not granted in Section 2 and Section 3. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Williams.
I will just end our opening presentation by stating that under Section 1, Academic Plan Design and Capacity; Section 2, Operations Plan and Capacity; Section 3, Financial Plan and Capacity; and Section 4, Portfolio Review Performance Record, that all partially meet standard. We did not find any section that met all standards. Finally...
That is your time. Thank you so much for that opening presentation. We are now gonna turn to representatives from the sponsor, who will have up to 15 minutes. Would appreciate you all introducing yourselves as you are starting, and we have a clicker. You may begin when you are ready.
Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Dolores Gresham.
Well, hold on one second. I want to make sure that mic is... Is it clear?
Testing. Are we good?
Oh, they're coming.
How's that?
Oh, okay.
I'll break into song. Let me turn that down a bit. Shall we start all over? Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Dolores Gresham. I am honored to be here to speak representing American Classical Education Tennessee as its chair, and specifically American Classical Academy Jackson Madison. And as you know, and for the benefit of the audience and those people of Tennessee who are watching us with great interest, in order to overturn a denial of the local Board of Education, the commission must do two tasks. Number one, find that the application meets or exceeds the metrics outlined in the Tennessee Department of Education's scoring rubric, and I will highlight the academic, operational, and financial plans of the application in just a moment. The second task is that approval of the application is in the best interest of the students, the LEA, or the community. So number one, what is in American Classical Academy Jackson Madison's charter application? It lays out a strong academic plan that lays out a content-rich education in the liberal arts and sciences paired with a strong focus on moral character and civic virtue. It's been found by other charter review committees in Tennessee to meet the Tennessee Charter Schools academic rubric standard. It describes in detail how our curriculum has consistently achieved student proficiencies in ELA and math across diverse student groups at rates between 55 and 80%, far above the local most recent TCAP scores of 23% proficiency in LEA and 16% proficiency in math in the local school system. It also provides detailed plans for how we will actively seek to remediate students' academic underperformance and learning loss, including plans to use Tennessee's RTI framework to quote, "accommodate, modify, or scaffold instruction as deemed necessary and appropriate," as well as how we will support special education students and the needs of diverse learners. Number two, it also contains a detailed operations plan that includes a detailed startup plan and pre-opening checklist in addition to teacher and staff hiring and staffing methods, best-in-class operating procedures, community and special population engagement plans, transportation and food service arrangements, and a robust student, family, and staff handbooks. It details a governing board that has continually evolved to best meet the needs for our success, including a board member who resides here in Madison County and is a county commissioner, and some nonprofit leaders, academics, and people with deep business experience. I'm gonna go off my prepared remarks here for a moment, just to talk about this governing body. Every one of these people are Tennessee residents. Every one of these people are successful. They anticipate success, they expect success, they are accustomed to success, and they know what it takes to be successful, and that is knowledge, drive, commitment, and yes, soul. They seek neither fame nor fortune, but are only laser-focused on bringing classical education to the children and families of Tennessee. Now let me get back to the operations plan. It also clarifies how many members of the Madison community support the opening of this school with letters of support, and from across the spectrum of parents, grandparents, community members, and it also provides clarity on how school will operate, including stating our commitment to follow all federal and state laws, such as being in compliance with Tennessee's teacher licensure requirements. And finally, it contains a robust financial plan. It provides comprehensive budgets through the first five years of operation. It details our extremely healthy financial position and how that uniquely positions us for success and will allow us to weather any unprecedented or unforeseen financial storms. And lastly, was found by multiple other county charter reviews to meet the charter school's financial rubric standard. So, two, the commission's second task. So why is the American Classical Academy Jackson Madison in the best interest of students, the LEA, or the community? We will create an option for students and parents whose needs are not currently being met by the local school system, including homeschoolers who desire a classical education and cannot afford the private school options in the county. So this creates equity. We will enable students to thrive academically and achieve success by delivering student proficiencies in ELA and math significantly higher than the local school system's five-year average, creating a virtuous cycle of student success within the district and narrowing the existing achievement gap. We will immediately help reverse the trend of declining enrollment in the local school system, which has continually lost students despite its population growth, as well as relieving hard-working parents in Madison County. as well as relieving hard-working parents in Madison County who have left the local school system for private school from the economic burden of that choice. We will save taxpayers at least forty-eight million dollars by saving Madison County residents from having to build yet another new school, a boon when residents and commissioners are already struggling to understand how to pay for the growth expected to come to Madison County from Blue Oval City. Finally, American Classical Academy, Jackson Madison, will help the LEA achieve its goals to increase equity in the district. As Mayor Massey has said, the opportunity is here. I don't want us to tout ourselves by saying, "Look at all these great opportunities we have," when it's only an opportunity for a certain subset. By creating a school, any student in the county can roll in by choice, something the LEA currently cannot offer. We will clearly help achieve this goal. Now my remarks have not even gotten to the exciting part. The exciting part, I'm going to turn over to Phil Schwenk. Mr. Schwenk is our first principal for ACE, and I invite him to come forward to talk about what kind of school we will build here in Jackson Madison County.
Thank you, Dolores. As Dolores said, my name is Phil Schwenk. I am an ACE principal with close to thirty years of experience in public education. I've been in public education as both a teacher and administrator in cities like Los Angeles and Cleveland, and have been both in the charter world and in major districts as well. As Dolores said, I get the fun part. I get to talk about our schools and what we do every day for kids. So let's start with what the mission of these schools would be. A school that trains students in virtue resulting in high academic achievement and the sound moral formation required for responsible citizenship. So how do we do this, and how do we begin? So to understand our heart as classical educationalists is that we believe that all of this starts with wonder, that wonder is the beginning of philosophy or knowledge. This is Aristotle. This idea that as human beings, we wonder about what's around us. I think this is most evident in small children. Anybody who's worked with small children, we physically see this display of wonder. Our hope, of course, is that this wonder makes its way throughout our lives, that we continue to be in wonder of the wonderful place that we are in and the world that we live in and the people that we live with. It is supposed to be both joyous and rigorous, meaning this should be something that we enjoy doing. It's not something that's meant to be just, you know, mundane. It should be something that's exciting, even though it's difficult. As I have said, rigor in our schools is fundamental in our schools because learning's hard. It is hard to learn. It is a struggle. And part of our work in a classical school is getting kids to continue to wonder, being willing to struggle, and finding the joy not only in the struggle itself, but in the fruits of that struggle. Our hope is that the end of this, this experience, we have kids that are knowledgeable, they're intellectually sound, but that they're also virtuous. These are good people of character. They're aware of who they are and how they relate to others, and the importance of seeking to be good. So we challenge our students to know themselves. This is something, obviously, from this is the Delphi, "Know thyself." Who are we as human beings? That's a question that we've been asking for thousands of years. It's a worthy question to think about, who am I? How do I relate to this world around me? So we start with this concept, even in the early ages, about who are we and why is it important that I'm here? We're very much focused on the individual. The individual is important. He or she is very important. What they have to say is very important. And if we're going to take small children and pull them into a society where they're supposed to be participants in democracy, they have to recognize their value and who they are and what their nature is and what the nature of all of us is, so that we better understand how to best live. So we orient these young people to what is the good and the true and the beautiful. As Aristotle argued about goodness and virtue, "We must therefore, by some means, secure that the character shall have at the outset a natural affinity for virtue, loving what is noble and hating what is base." A child should be oriented towards what is good, what is noble, what should I be, or what ought I be, or how should I act? And I should be taught also to hate what I shouldn't be and what I shouldn't act like, especially in my relationship to others. And Aristotle talks about civics and citizenry, and always the better the character, the better the government. If we're going to be making young people to be participants in a democracy, it's important that they recognize that the better we are as a community, as individuals, the better our democracy will function. Our approach is simple, but it's time-tested, thousands of years of people educating kids. We're quite transparent, allows us to see clearly. We try to see things as they are. The fact is, is that we do a lot of our study, not only in, in, like, these early years around literacy and, and reading and mathematics, but as they get older, we're introducing them to primary documents, where they get to see words. Words have meaning. What did that person mean by those words? Okay, so we have honest dialogues around these things. We're in classrooms where there's direct instruction, aristocratic methods, there's dialogue and conversation about meaning, what words mean, what is expected by that. What's the, they get to evaluate them, especially as they get older. Is this good? Is this bad? Do we practice this or not? We teach the mind and the heart in order to access the wisdom of the giants. So what I refer to as the giants are, there's, this question is an age-old question, like, who am I? People have been writing about this for thousands of years, and it's worthy of our time to look at this heritage and see what they've understood about who we are, and getting our kids, basically, in effect, to stand on their shoulders so that they see more clearly ahead of them in their present time based on the ideas and the information that's provided by those who come before us. So obviously, to be able to do that, they need to be able to read, write, speak, and reason well, something that's central to us as classical educators, so that they could see these giants and participate in the conversation that they've been participating in for years. We also believe that in instruction, there needs to be decorum and order. This is an important place, this school, this place of learning. It is a sacred space. It's a place where I should be able to develop intellectually and in my moral character. So the idea of having order and respect in a place where I can learn is very important. We obviously are very much pushing a respect for others, for their teachers, for their, their peers in the classroom, for themselves, and that they want to seek to be excellent, the best they can be intellectually and morally. It's the formation of habits. Habits take time, a lifetime of habits. Okay, hopefully, as adults, we recognize that we're always working on this idea of better forming our habits. And starting that conversation young with children is really important. We want them to be learned and virtuous around teachers and staff that are that. If you're going to put teachers and staff in front of kids, they need to be models of those behaviors, so that kids emulate who's in front of them, both intellectually and morally. We along, we walk, because of that, as if we're going to be adults in a building around kids, we need to walk around the adults that are the most important adults in their lives, their parents, where they're primary educators. They're their most important educators. And what they would be choosing to do is have us along with them for that, that work. And so it's important to include the parents in that dialogue. They're an important part of this dialogue. And so we give them several opportunities to be part of that, not only in like conferences, but it is not uncommon in our schools to see parents on a daily basis playing important roles in the working with our kids. And as a school, we think it's also very important, especially as classical schools, to educate our parents on our work. So we're often having opportunities for parents to see what it is that we do. So as a quick snapshot of a day in the life at one of our schools, fill the building with adults who love students, love learning, seek to be good, and have significant knowledge about what they teach. That should be kind of a, kind of a no duh, but the idea is you want adults that love what they're doing, and they love the person they're speaking to. And in doing so, it allows a child to see somebody who is good and see somebody who cares about them, and also knows stuff that it's worthy of me to pay attention to. They know things, and perhaps I should pay attention to what they're saying. We begin each day together, so we have an opening assembly where everybody comes together, so we all know why we're here, why we exist. It doesn't matter what grade we're in. We always start with a pledge of allegiance, patriotic song, a statement of the school's focus, and recitation. Recitation is a critical part, a memorization part of who we are as classical education. It's usually poetry or major speeches. Along with academic and intellectual pursuits, having ongoing conversations of virtues and virtuous behavior, it's in everything we do. It's not only in our just day-to-day talk and our lessons, it's in our discipline policy. What does it mean to be courageous, prudent, moderate, and how do we act that out? Along with core subjects, of course, we teach music, art, Latin logic, rhetoric, physical education, and we make an environment where everybody can find success.
Thank you very much for those opening statements, and also for respecting the timer. I appreciate that as well. We are now going to move into questions that I have for both the local board and the sponsor. I will ask you to try to limit your responses to about three or so minutes or less. I will very nicely wrap you up if I feel like we've gotten the information or I need us to move on for a different topic. My first set of questions is going to be for Jackson Madison School System. So the first question I have is, the amended application discusses the fact that the overall student population has been declining in the county, as well as it was referenced in the opening presentation by the sponsor. So I would like the district to share what are the overall enrollment trends that you're seeing for the district? And are there any areas of the district specifically, geographically, that are in need of additional schools or where there is, or capacity needs within the current school system?
I'll just start with the data. With regard to the census data that was presented by, with regard to the census data that was presented in the application, the total population for Madison County was ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-three in 2020, and the total population for Madison County in 2010, with the ten-year trend, was ninety-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-four. That's an increase of five hundred and twenty-nine people, or five percent. However, the population of school-aged children, five to seventeen, in Madison County, if we consider that, the census data shows that that population of children in 2020 was six thousand and nine, and the population in 2010 was six thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine, for a decrease of nine hundred and eighty school-aged children. During the same period, Jackson Madison County student enrollment dropped from twelve thousand six hundred and ninety-three in 2010 to eleven thousand eight hundred and seventeen in 2020, for a decrease of eight hundred and seventy-six students.
Thank you for that specific information. Do you all have a sense of what is the cause of some of those enrollment declines? Have you all, as a district, studied the reasoning behind what was happened around that census data in your enrollment information?
I think what Dr. Williams was showing in those numbers is that our enrollment has decreased by about the same number of students that our student age for the county has decreased. So although our population as a whole is the same, we are a much older community than we were ten years ago. And also, if you look at other trends within the county, we have had more growth in the northern section of Jackson Madison County, and that is the one area where we haven't had new schools built. But we are now have a current new K-8 school that is being built in that northwest corridor where we have seen the largest growth in Jackson Madison County. And so we hope that that school will capture some of those residents living in that area that may not be attending Jackson Madison County School System.
Thank you. And just to follow up very quickly, so what I'm taking is that other than this northwest corridor that you referenced, there's no projection the district has in terms of a school being overcapacity or a great need that the current buildings couldn't handle?
Jackson Madison County opened two, actually, three new schools last year for the 2021, 2022 school year. Those schools, Jackson Central Mary Middle School, Jackson Central Mary High School, and our JASSA, which is our cyber school.
My next one is shift to how the district handled the review of the application. So based on the notes that were provided to the commission, it listed sixteen individuals from across the district, the county, and the community. Can you describe how all of those individuals evaluated the application and how consensus around that ultimately came to the ratings that you shared today? How is that built across a committee that large?
So each one of those sixteen individuals that was part of the, the committee was assigned a certain section based upon their expertise in the district. So it was, for example, those that were on the operational side of Jackson Madison County looked at, at Section 2. We had our Madison County Finance Director, who was part of the group that came in and evaluated the financial section. And then we had a large team of our academic professionals, either at the district level and also at the school level, that evaluated the academic side of it. So each one of those members took a section, reviewed those sections, made notes on those sections, and then we came back together as a whole group on multiple occasions and reviewed those, talked about those. The, the different individuals had to point out, you know, why a certain section may have exceeded, why a certain section may not have exceeded on the expectation according to the rubric. So it was, it was thoroughly evaluated by professionals that were, that were target, very specifically targeted for certain sections based on their areas of expertise.
I mean, two quick follow-up questions there. One, what sort of training did you all provide to the review committee to ensure that they did conduct an unbiased process? And then my second question is, did you have any of the review committee review the entirety of the application, or was it by specific section?
We started with specific sections, but we asked all members to review the entire application, which that occurred. So what was that?
Training, and how did you prepare them?
We, we had training. We attended the webinars, and after the webinar, then brought that information back to the full group and committee to go over what that looked like, what kind of responses should occur, should be written in the areas of concern, and what type of questions. So we went through that entire process that was presented to us during the webinar.
Thank you. So in accordance with statute, it says that a local board's decision to deny an application must be stated in writing and specify objective reasons for denial. So apart from the rubric and discussions that we had, can you identify what were the primary reasons cited by the local board in their denial of American Classical Madison? I know you talked about the ratings today, but I wanted to make sure that we had a general sense of what are the specific reasons that the local board used in, in their denial of the application?
The local board, the recommendation from the Charter School Review Committee, they used the recommend, they used, we used the scoring rubric that provided by the state, and we presented that information to the local board. And that was, they made their decision based on the recommendation that we provided.
So in the review committee's recommendation report, it cites that the American Classical Madison partially met some of the standards around network management and governance. However, for the type of application that they applied under, those, they were not required to complete those sections because they currently are not operating any schools. So I want to have a better understanding of how both the review committee and the local board assessed these sections and used this information as a part of their decision-making, seeing that it wasn't required of the applicant.
One thing that I can say, that was done in error. In particular, our committee looked at it from a standpoint that American Classical Academy already had charter schools in other locations. So we reviewed information from applications and charter, charter schools that they had in other states. And so we changed that to not applicable at this time.
So to be clear, was the local, did the local Board of Education use any of that information when they reviewed and considered the amended application?
No, none of that information was a part of the recommendation that we made.
When we were reviewing the district's scoring rubric on the amended application, it reflected that there was one board member from a surrounding county and one board member that was from Nashville that was added as a part of the amended application. So I want to make sure I have an understanding of who was on the governing board of American Classical Education at the time that the district reviewed that amended application? And were you made aware of any changes in board governance or membership after the amended application was filed?
The following individuals were listed on the governing board of American Classical Academy at the time of the amended application, and that was Michael Hunter, Patrick Flannery, Michael Benbury, Donna Eaton was added, Dolores Gresham was added, Jason Coout, and Oscar Ortiz Dante, Tyler Horni, and Luke Rockson. The district was not notified of any changes in board membership by the applicant after their submission of the amended application.
Thank you. So in the notice of appeal that we received from American Classical Academy Madison upon their appeal to the commission, it stated that the school would be operated by American Classical Education, which was a nonprofit separate from Hillsdale College, and that all current board members are residents of Tennessee. So I wanted to understand that what was the nonprofit entity that was evaluated by the district in their amended application? And was the district notified of any changes in the nonprofit entity governing the school between amended application, after the amended application was filed?
The district was not notified of anything after the application was filed. We reviewed the American Classical Academy application as an entity.
The district held a meeting on July eleventh of twenty-twenty-two in which it stated that American Classical Academy Madison was on the agenda. This information about this meeting was not provided to the commission as a part of our request for information. So can you share more about what occurred at this meeting? If it was an executive session, if it was a public working session?
Okay, so the July eleventh meeting was a work session, board work session, and that work session was, it was a public work session, and however, the notes or minutes are not kept at the work sessions, and so that's why they were not submitted on that.
And to clarify, were there any presentation materials or materials given to the local Board of Education regarding that meeting?
Just discussions within the work session on the application.
Thank you. I will note that we may be reaching out as a follow-up to get any, any and all materials about that meeting, if there was anything, so just wanted to note that. My final question is that on the July fourteenth meeting of the local board, it references a resolution that was called American Classical Education Charter Amendment in parentheses, Hillsdale College. And according to the notice of appeal, the sponsor contacted the district to seek clarification of why the name Hillsdale College was listed on the agenda. However, at least in terms of what the sponsor shared with the commission, this issue was not resolved. What was the connection between the wording on the agenda item for the local board and the resolution, which actually does not include the name Hillsdale College?
Okay, so Hillsdale College was listed in error on the agenda prepared by the board secretary. However, the confusion is understandable, in light of the fact that the amended application is replete with references to Hillsdale College. Two such references are noted below. On page ten of the application, it says the school will be affiliated with Hillsdale College K-12 office and will implement K-12 curriculum model. It's K-12 curriculum model. Also, on page fourteen, number two, it states that American Classical Academy Madison will utilize student readiness tools, training programs, and resources available through Department of Ed initiatives and its partnership with Hillsdale to positively impact every student of the school. However, the resolution was prepared without a reference to Hillsdale College, and it was prepared by the board attorney.
Thank you, and that concludes my questions for the district, and I'm now going to turn to representatives for the sponsor. I would ask that if you have not spoken or identified yourselves, that you please do so as you answer questions. So my first question for the sponsor is about the research and community analysis conducted for, to determine that Madison County was a good location for this proposed school. I think in particular, we've talked a lot about the student enrollment and the populations of the district, and that overall enrollment is either plateauing, declining, depending on what numbers you want to look at. So would like to know how the group determined that this was the best location for the school, and then as a quick follow-up, if you could provide an update on identified facilities within the community?
Yeah, absolutely. So our process as an organization, yeah, sorry, my name is Joel Schellheimer. I'm the Executive Director of American Classical Education. As part of our process to identify any location where we would apply for a charter school, we look at a number of different factors to understand whether there would be appropriate demand from the community, whether there would be sufficient resources to ensure us that projected enrollment numbers would be met. That process looks at socioeconomic data, it looks at growth trends, it looks at current trends within the district, it seeks to understand existing proficiency within the district from an educational standard perspective, as well as the needs of the community, which are assessed through multiple means, including both quantitative and qualitative exercises. I will note that we, and I think there's a question coming about a survey, which gets into the quantitative, so I'll focus on the qualitative, which I firmly believe is more important, and that is numerous conversations within the community, assessing whether a public, free, classical charter school would be of interest to members of the community. Jackson-Madison has seen tremendous growth in the private school community, while, as noted, the district has continued to see declines in the public school. And so many parents we spoke to were incredibly excited about the prospect of having a school that so far has only been available to an elite few within the community because of the prices of the private schools.
And can you provide an update on the facility?
Yeah, we are excited to announce that we have an LOI in Jackson County with a facility that is more than adequate to meet our needs. This is a facility that is currently housing a nonprofit. It contains more than forty-five thousand square feet and enough acreage to contain numerous athletic facilities for the students. It is centrally located, and we believe will allow us to meet our stated goal in the application of allowing any student within Madison County who would decide to enroll at the school to attend.
Thank you. As you referenced in your previous response, the amended application does discuss the survey that was conducted by American Classical Education to determine that there was sufficient demand for the school. So can you provide more information about when and how this survey was conducted, and what types of questions were asked as a part of the survey, such that you determined that this was an appropriate sufficient location for the school?
Yeah, I will re-note that the survey is only one part of the formula used to identify whether a location would be a good fit for what American Classical Education seeks to build. However, happy to discuss that questionnaire. This is conducted by a third party, beginning in late twenty-twenty-one. That third party reached out to family members and community members within five counties in Tennessee, specifically including Madison County. Within Madison County, we had enough of a response rate on questions such as, would you be interested in a public charter school in your community? Are you interested in a classical education model? If you are parents or have children or guardians of children of school-aged children, would you consider enrolling in a school like this? I will note that those details of that, although the survey was discussed at length in the application, the particular survey results were not included in the application. I should also note that they were never requested by Jackson-Madison County School System Review Team. We would have been happy to provide them had we been asked.
Thank you. And follow-up there, in the application, it was noted that a hundred and ten people responded to that survey. So my first question is, can you specify, were those with, over the five counties that were surveyed, or is that specific to a hundred and ten individuals within Madison County?
Yeah, I apologize, I don't have those survey results in front of me right now, so I hesitate to give you an exact number. As I'll just say again, we were more than confident that within Jackson-Madison community, there would be enough interest for us to open that school.
And my follow-up question there is that, you know, we are considering three appeals from the sponsor, and I will say that when we looked at the amended application, there were fewer letters of support within the amended application for Madison than there were for the other districts. So I do want to have a better understanding of what specific parent and community support beyond the survey that we've discussed has been built for you to determine that you will be able to meet those enrollment projections that you included in the amended application?
Yeah, so our initial enrollment projections are for three hundred and forty students, right, which again represents a fraction of the current school district's current enrollment. As I'm quite confident the commission will hear today, and as again, I think was firmly buttressed in our application, there are numerous parents who seek another alternative, can currently not afford the private school alternatives that exist in this community, and have said that they would be highly interested in enrolling their children at the school. That being said, of course, those are enrollment projections, right? And so that's why our application also contains an extremely robust community engagement effort and plans, including multiple marketing campaigns that are laid out in detail, the fact that we will advertise those campaigns in multiple languages, and so we are quite confident in our ability to fill that school if we are given the charter.
Thank you. So my next question is about that, in the notice of appeal, as I've stated to my question for the local board, it stated that the school would be operated by American Classical Education, which is a nonprofit organization separate from Hillsdale College. And the notice also goes on to state that since its initial founding, that American Classical Education has worked to localize the board to ensure alignment with the community, and as a result, all current members are residents of Tennessee, and as you stated in your opening presentation as well. Can we get a better understanding of why did the board reconstitution happen after the amended application was submitted to the district? And was the district notified of this change, such that the new board configuration could be considered in the amended application?
Hi, my name is Rich Hagland. I serve as legal counsel to the American Classical Education. We appreciate the commission's desire to ensure that all legal requirements are met as ACE has continued to prepare an exceptional group of individuals to serve as the governing body of this school, bound by a charter agreement entered into by the authorizer and the sponsor. As previously articulated in our capacity interview and in a previous hearing, ACE completely satisfies the legal requirements as a sponsor. Once a sponsor files an amended application, the sponsor stands behind a door with a handle on only one side. Only the authorizer, like the commission, can open that door. The commission's rule on appeals states, quote, "Commission staff shall not accept an incomplete appeal or any additional documentation from the charter school sponsor beyond the contents of the notice of appeal unless requested by the commission staff," closed quote. The notice of appeal did not allow ACE to submit the information that the commission is now asking for, and asking why we did not previously submit it. As Dr. Chandler mentioned, the proposed governing body had a limited number of representatives from Tennessee of its own volition, and in response to concerns like these, this summer ACE formed a Tennessee nonprofit corporation, recruited Tennessee residents to serve as the governing body, and approved bylaws. That work was done August tenth. So while the local board and the commission staff were working diligently reviewing the amended application, as it was written and filed in May, ACE was working diligently in compliance with Tennessee Code annotated forty-nine thirteen one oh four, one oh eight, and one eleven, to develop a governing body and organization that would be in place from the start of school and that would deliver on the promises made to the community and its children. The law does not prevent ACE from further, making further preparations for its nonprofit corporation and governing body to successfully launch the school. The commission did not accept any additional information when offered nor requested. Instead, by raising these concerns in the hearing, the commission seems to be suggesting that ACE did something improper, or something that affected its legal standing because it continued to comply with the statutes cited above and feedback from the local Board of Education. We have offered and remain happy to submit the new nonprofit articles of incorporation, bylaws, and governing board members' information to the commission to be considered either before or after execution of our charter agreement with the sponsor. If the commission believes that this school meets the quality standards and that authorizing it is in the best interest of the students, the district, or the community, we look forward to entering a charter agreement between the sponsor and the commission. We believe that working out these details is best done post-authorization rather than during the precious time in a hearing that provides the public its main opportunity to speak about whether or not this school would be in the best interest of the students, the district, or the community.
Thank you for that information. I do want to follow up there that we are conducting a de novo review of the amended application, which was submitted to the district. So the, want to make sure we have an understanding that the list of individuals that are on the governing board in the proposed bylaws and the nonprofit entity in the amended application is not the board and bylaws and articles of incorporation who, if approved, would be governing the school. Is that correct?
It is our intent to be able to have this new nonprofit entity and its governing body serve as the governing body that will operate the charter school. As pursuant to statute, as we articulated yesterday in great detail, the sponsor is the proposed governing body. The sponsor and the governing body are distinct entities in statute, and it's the sponsor that signs the charter agreement that is then binding on the governing body. And this happens regularly with charter schools across Tennessee and with other authorizers. It typically happens post-authorization and once a school is already operating. The commission, for example, has rules about amending your charter by, when you change governing body members, but there's not a provision for us continuing to do that while we're waiting for the charter amendment appeal process to run its course. And we feel like it's too important for us to have sat on our hands while waiting for this whole process to run before we made those improvements, as recommended by the local board and in line with our own desires.
And as was stated, you know, our, because of the integrity of the commission's appeal in an appeal, we are limited to the record that is created at the local district. There are some avenues where we can accept additional information. This is one of them. You all were able to request information, submit information in the notice of appeal. But I do, I do want to note that I did have a question about the biographical information of the new board, since that is not something that was contained within the amended application. So can you share what is the current membership of the board and what is their experience in opening charter schools?
To clarify, I can speak both to the sponsoring organization that was in the application or be happy to speak to the governing board that we have talked about here today, proposed governing board.
So I would like to speak to the governing board we have today. We have biographical information in the amended application, but the individuals who signed the notice of appeal, we only have information about one of those individuals who was in the amended application, so we would like additional information for the other members of the governing board at this, at this time.
Great. As we shared in great detail on Monday with the commission during our capacity hearing, I'm happy to reiterate that here, although I do think it's perhaps not a great use of time for the folks in the audience. But of course, I'll start with Joey Hale, who is a local county commissioner here in Rutherford County, a long career in military, is a public servant within this area, and has been, as a family member, as a, sorry, a father and a, of two children within the community, a well-respected member of the community. I will then move on to Dennis Pearson, who is an academic in Clarksville, Montgomery. He's a professor at Austin P. He's also a father of multiple children who have gone through the Clarksville School System. He has a long career in academics and has also experience in terms of meeting academic compliance within the state of Tennessee and part of his role at Austin P. Michelle Garcia has a long experience as both a finance director and executive director of nonprofits. She's located in Rutherford County. Michelle is also a mother and a parent of students who have gone through the local public school system. She's also a mother who has had a child go through a classical school. And so her deep experience in managing and running, ensuring compliance with all laws as a nonprofit director, we think is extremely valuable. And lastly, I'll highlight Rick Hussera, who lives in eastern Tennessee. Rick has a long career in business. He was a former trader on the stock exchange in Chicago. He's been involved in multiple private and nonprofit efforts in east Tennessee that have involved multiple members of local government within east Tennessee. He is deeply familiar with business. He has a long experience of being involved in education, and we are very happy to have him on that governing, proposed governing body.
Thank you. And my final question is, again, the acknowledgement that the sponsor has applied for multiple schools across Tennessee. Maybe that means questions. No, I'll continue. There we go. And so, and then they are in very distinct geographic locations. So want to understand, what is the network vision for if those all three or two or one were to be approved? And how do you all envision having the capacity to open three schools in three very distinct geographic locations in Tennessee in one year?
I'll answer that in multiple parts. As the Executive Director of ACE, I think my background and experience is uniquely situated to ensure success, even if we are ultimately granted three charters across the state of Tennessee. I am a graduate of Hillsdale College. I have a graduate degree from Cambridge. I'm a graduate of Harvard Law School. I have worked at McKinsey, the prominent global consulting firm, for multiple years. I've worked in Fortune Twenty companies as the global head of strategy. I run P&Ls in excess of one point two billion and have managed up to eight hundred people. I'm a former educator, as a teacher. I'm a father who has had a child in a public charter school, and I'm also a product of the classical education. In addition to my business experience and leadership experience, ACE is in a unique financial position that will allow us to hire any resources necessary to ensure the success of our schools. This is unusual in the charter school world, as the commission well knows, but our unique financial position makes us quite confident that we'll be able to hire appropriate people. That process has already begun, as we've been able to hire individuals like Principal Phil Schwank, who already spoke in front of this commission. His background and experience are exemplary, and his ability to add value to our schools and ensure that they are truly excellent is really unquestioned.
Thank you very much. And that does conclude my questions. So we are going to now move into public comment. As a part of the public comment period, I'm going to call for the names of the individuals who signed up in advance. I will call one or two names so that people are ready and on deck. You will have up to two minutes. You're going to come to this microphone right here. My colleague will be timing you, so when you hear that the timer go off, that means your two minutes are up. I would ask that you introduce yourself before you begin speaking, so we can have that information on the record. I do want to remind everyone that the public comment period, to be included in my recommendation, goes through the next week. We close our public comments for this appeal in this hearing on September the twenty-second at 1:00 PM Central Time. So would absolutely encourage individuals, if you want to leave a comment with a member of our staff today, if you want to submit a comment online in the next week, we consider all comments, both written and oral. All comments are provided to our commissioners as a part of their All comments are provided to our commissioners as a part of their record. Okay, the first two or three names we have signed up, we have Constance Everie, Mary Bowen, and Shanice Creasy. I have Constance, Mary Bowen, Shanice Creasy. Okay. Okay, come on in. You're our first one. Just introduce yourself for the record, please.
My name is Mary Bowen, as in Bowen Arrow, and I am a longtime resident of Madison County, if you count all of my 69 years, because I was born here, lived in Memphis for a good long while. And I really appreciate the opportunity to speak directly to you folks. It is really important for us to get our message to you that this is a good idea. We have various backgrounds. Mine is in special education, not teaching special education, raising special education. Son and grandson both did not exactly measure up. We have dealt with two, three public schools and four private schools in the course of two careers, and have been dismissed from many of them with, well, your child is just not a good fit. The charter school promises to have a much better answer for us than that. Both of my children, my son and my grandson, are high functioning but special needs, and that's not been addressed in the school system nor in the private schools. We are now homeschooling. We are one of the 50,000 to 60,000 families across the state of Tennessee that have decided that we can do this on our own. There are good support systems available for it, and we have been very successful with classical education program that is a buttress to the curriculum that we need to follow in order to homeschool. So I'm familiar with classical education, and I love it. I have watched my grandson light up with it. So hope and excitement now, instead of the frustration that I've had. All of us are here today. All of you, all of us are here today because Governor Lee thought this was a really good idea. And so we are pushing, we are imploring, we are asking that you consider the American Classical Academy's program to introduce a much-needed change in curriculum and in mentoring. And those of us who are sitting back here promise to help.
Thank you very much for your comments. We have Shanice Creasy and David Guerra. I would say if you've heard your name, you come on up. We'll work it out. Thank you. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Hello to the commission members. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is David Guerra. I'm a semi-retired, and I live here in western Tennessee. And among many other endeavors, I was a teacher for 25 years. I taught and lectured students at all grade levels, including college and vocational schools. As a parent and now a grandparent, I want high-quality education options for the grandchildren and other grandchildren and other children around this area. I spent many hours helping both of my children through school, and in doing so was able to observe materials and teaching methods that worked and those that did not. Lately, I've been exposed to homework that my neighbors' kids have brought home when they occasionally come over to wait for their parents. In my opinion, some of the material is just bad, and it has reflected on the, by the inability of the students to deal with it. My wish is for all schools to be successful, and from my experience, the best way to make that happen is to have an open, to open a proven, successful school system that in time will be an example for other schools to follow and match. And school option is also provide parents with the option to choose a school that best suits their child's needs. When options are available, parents will be more inclined to research the school's curriculum and what else it offers, making parents more involved. That will strengthen the relationship between parents and schools. It seems to me that the locals' district is playing politics, so I'm asking the commission to give American Classical a fair hearing by reviewing the facts and only the facts, and by doing so, the commission will approve the American Classical Academy's application. I believe their application meets the qualifications for approval and was only denied by local jurisdiction due to politics and desire to avoid any competition. And from what I heard today, I'm strengthening that even more because I was very impressed. I understand that the local district isn't going to want any competition or options. However, this isn't about protecting bureaucracies and systems. It should be about the kids and empowering families to have educational options.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for letting me speak.
Appreciate it. All right, we have Londa Rolfing and Sean Higgins.
Hi, I'm Londa Rolfing. Six years ago, my husband and I chose Jackson, Tennessee, as the city to which to retire from Illinois. We love it here. However, there is no way we would have chosen Jackson as our home if we still had children in the K to 12 age range. Why? Because of poor public school performance ratings. There is absolutely no way we could have afforded the public schools, the private schools here. Why does it matter to me, a 70-year-old senior citizen without even grandchildren in the local public schools? I have routine contact with kids ages six through high school from all of the local schools, public, private, and home taught. How? I teach kids to sew. I have now served over 125 families in my home studio. This is what I see. Children have no idea of how to even measure a length. Fractions? Blank stares when I ask which is bigger, a half inch or a quarter of an inch? Proportions or ratios? Forget it. The children of our community deserve a good education be made available with as many choices as possible. Test scores reveal that something is very wrong here in Jackson. A public charter school with a curriculum as defined would offer a choice and give regular public schools needed competition. Competition is a good thing, and I cannot help but conclude that in denying the charter school application, our school board is simply fearful of a charter school being a success. That is not a reason to deny parents and children in Madison County of this charter school as a free public school choice. Thank you for this opportunity to hear from a local senior citizen.
Thank you very much. I have Sean Higgins, and then I have Glenn Go.
My name is Sean Higgins, and I'm in here to speak in favor of the American Classical Academy Madison. My wife, Melissa, and I, we have five children, four of which we are currently homeschooling, one has now begun his freshman year of college. Our kids were originally in the Augustine School. It's a private classical education school here in Jackson. But after three years, we ran into the problem that we simply could no longer afford to send our kids there due to high tuition costs. I come before you speaking in great favor of the classical education model, having seen our kids flourish from it for many years. My wife and I, we first witnessed this and saw our children just blossom under this model, and we have a lot of experience in education with our kids. We've homeschooled, we've public schooled here in Jackson, we've private schooled here in Jackson, and we really desire that, for this charter school option, we desire for our kids to be able to have this opportunity to be back studying under the classical model. It is my hope that the commission would provide a fair review of the facts and nothing else. As a parent and a taxpayer, I understand that first, competition and options are good things for our community. It gives us a freedom to choose what works best for our families and our children and to utilize their unique gifts and their unique learning habits so that they can excel in a model that they learn best and can go to contribute in meaningful ways to our society. Second, that having kids has taught me that no kid is the same, and no kid learns the same way. What works for one kid doesn't always work for the other kid. That is truly the beauty of this country, is that we have the freedom and option to choose, and I truly believe our children, our families, our community need opportunities like this. I implore you to take our comments into consideration, and please listen to the demand from our local families. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Glenn Go, and then I have Brandy Lynn Taylor.
Hello, my name is Glenn Gough, G-A-U-G-H. Maybe the weirdest name in the room today. I'm also different in the aspect that I am a parent of two public school children here in the Jackson-Madison County School System, and I will say what Dr. Williams did not trumpet. The public school system here offers a lot of options, and that's why we have taken advantage of it. However, on principle, I think the better option across the board is choice. You can't design enough academic programs to benefit every child in the best way possible, but choice should be an above-the-board, and all-of-the-above concept, including charters and other options. We have homeschooled our children in the past, and only because of our unique situation and our unique children are we in the public system today at the Jackson Academic Steam Academy. And I tell you that we desperately need a curriculum like what American Classical Academy offers. You have only look at the society around us today, the violence, the lack of virtue and decorum to see that more students need the option to learn in a classical setting. And to the point that we have added schools and added choice in Jackson-Madison County, I cannot see a downside to adding an option that offers a classical education to those students and families that would desire it. So thank you for the opportunity and hope that you will consider seriously authorizing this charter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have Brandy Lynn Taylor, and then Cindy Bryant.
My name is Brandy Lynn Taylor. I'm a mother to school-aged children here in Madison County, and I am wholeheartedly in favor of this charter school initiative. I usually prefer to deal in objective facts, so let's jump straight in and talk about numbers. Our most recent TCAP scores show that less than one-quarter of students within our public schools are considered to be meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. This means that 77% of our students are not able to read at their grade level. Probably the most distressing fact is that those numbers are actually considered an improvement. Studies have shown over and over again that reading ability is a strong predictor of future success. The Jackson-Madison County School System is simply not producing strong readers. Since 2015 especially, our students' ELA scores have precipitously declined, going from approximately 38% proficient down to about 24% proficient. And despite claims made that, quote, "third-through-eighth-grade students improved in English and language arts, scoring above the state average," the truth is that Jackson-Madison County students are still significantly below the state average, specifically by about 14%. This is indicative of a system that is simply not working. When you include the fact that we have consistently had one or more schools listed as priority schools, the necessary conclusion is that something has to change for the sake of our students. Enter this charter school initiative. Resources provided by our own state Department of Education highlight the many benefits and successes of charter schools, one of which includes higher student growth scores and more days of measurable progress when compared to their traditional public school counterparts. Therefore, what I cannot fathom is why our local school board and superintendent would reject such a viable option in a community that so desperately needs it. The reasons and the numbers simply don't add up. In conclusion, the state would be well within the scope of the law to grant permission for a charter school in Madison County. Clear need has been established. What remains unclear is why anyone would say no. As a final note, if you would like to see sources for each point I have made within this brief speech, I do have copies of that data available.
Thank you very much for your comments. I next have Cindy Bryant, and then Kyle Balding.
My name is Cindy Bryant, and I'm a commissioner and a parent of Jackson-Madison County School System. I've been a parent and a grandparent. JC, Jackson-Madison County Schools is home to several academic programs that have specific focus for their learning. The successes are Community Montessori School. They follow a directly Montessori approach, open enrollment lottery. Early College High School, they are challenged academically, but their admission requires an application and interview process. Madison County Magnet High School is admission is only lottery-based. Middle School Academic Northeast, this school has specific core classes. A selection committee screens the applications. Lots of opportunities for students, but not all students. Many needs are not being met. It is up to the parents and community, not the government, to offer the best education for our public schools. Jackson has an opportunity to have an American classical education offered as a choice for parents, to include all students, a free and public school. It too has a mission, helping students develop intellectual and personal habits and skills upon which responsible, independent, and flourishing lives are built, and the firm believe that such lives are the basis of a free and just society. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. We have Kyle Balding and Donna Thomas.
Hello, and thank you for letting me address you here today in favor of American Classical Academy. My name is Kyle Balding. I'm a store manager with Walmart. My wife, she's a realtor here in Jackson. We live in Jackson and have for the last nine years. We're here as a family to speak in favor of American Classical Academy's Madison County application and appeal. We currently have two boys that are in private school, one of which, to note, has a speech delay. It is our belief that this school would be an excellent fit and would allow us to put our children back into public school with a first-class curriculum and one that would fit our kids' needs. We've currently made a financial sacrifice to put our children into private school, but that has been the best decision, given the state of the local school ordinance. Blessing, it is our belief that it would be a blessing to have American Classical Academy here in Madison County, and we think that it will meet the kids' needs and put our kids back in public school. I believe American Classical Academy's application was denied for political reasons, and now judged for their wonderful curriculum and the merits of their application. I am thankful to have a state charter commission that can fairly judge the application and take local, political, and media sensation out of the process. Take a look at the opposition. It's typically about money and less about the kids' needs and each individual student. They will grasp on any other narrative regardless of its truth or its accuracy in order to prevent kids from having their options. This is about providing a high-quality choice for families and students, and as a taxpayer, I would like the option to have more than one public school option. No one will force their children to attend this school, however, we have learned over the past years that kids need options and that one size does not fit all. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here today to speak in favor of American Classical Academy, and I hope that you provide Madison County with options. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Donna Thomas and Matthew Marshall.
Hello, my name is Donna Thomas. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm a former business owner, the president of a local nonprofit here in Madison County, the daughter of an educator, and most recently, the grandmother of my very first grandchild, Macy. As the daughter of a teacher, the importance of education was not lost on me. I was blessed to be part of a fantastic school system all the way through high school, and wanted the same thing for my son. And as a matter of fact, I attempted to move to Madison County 10 years ago with a 14-year-old and a 13-year-old and opted to stay in Shelby County because the school systems here were just not what I wanted for my children. Fast forward to why we're here today. While raising my son, I put him through school systems, as I said, in Shelby County, the state of California, as well as the state of Georgia. I can say he definitely did not get the same experience I had growing up. He's now a father and considering, like I did, to move to Madison County to raise his family. The academic opportunities for his daughter are at the forefront of his decision. As a 24-year-old, the financial impact of his daughter's education is also equally as important. Unfortunately, the Madison Jackson, the Madison County School System does not provide a compelling argument for his daughter or his young family to move here because they simply can't afford the private school options here. Both parents would love to homeschool. They've talked about it a lot, but they can't afford to do so because they're both going to be working full-time to take care of their family. Families currently living in Madison County, as well as those looking to move here to participate in the economic development of this great city, deserve the opportunity to have the options for their child's education. As a community, we owe it to these families to have school option that fosters creativity, engagement, and provides them with an intellectually stimulating environment while also giving them a strong moral foundation. We have a lot of challenges with our upcoming generation, from social media and technology to social issues and special learning needs that we've heard about here today. Addressing these issues is paramount to providing our children with the foundation for education and success. That is your task.
Thank you very much. We have Matthew Marshall and Olivia Abernathy.
My name is Matt Marshall. I'm the president of United Way of Western Tennessee. We work in 15 counties here in West Tennessee, with our focus being on health, education, and financial stability. We have very close relationships with almost all of the LEAs here in West Tennessee, and we operate several education initiatives and programs. But more importantly, I'm actually here to speak as a parent of three children here in Jackson-Madison County School System. I also serve on I also serve on the district's parent council, and I have a master's degree in education, having previously worked in both public and private education, and I'm also a pastor. I'm not opposed to the idea of charter schools in principle. However, I do stand today in opposition to the proposal from American Classical Education for a few reasons. One, this would not represent an alliance with our local community and its leadership and cause further strain on what are already limited resources, while also undercutting local autonomy and self-governance. Number two, there is already a model in play in our community that is proving to work. Several years ago, my daughter, who is now in seventh grade, began her educational journey at Arlington Elementary School. At that time, it was a school on the priority list and right near the bottom of our state. But several families chose Arlington as our neighborhood school, and through the support of parents and the incredible work of principals and teachers, Arlington has now moved off of the priority list. And my daughter has excelled academically, as have her two siblings. With Dr. King and his administration, we have a platform and model to ensure success. Approving this charter proposal would undercut that progress. And finally, number three, it's not clear how the proposed charter program will ensure that students and families with the greatest needs are served. In the application, they state that their target racial mix will be eighty percent white and twenty percent African American, yet the makeup of Jackson is forty-eight percent white and forty-five percent African American. So there are certainly some questions to be asked around that discrepancy. They also failed to offer a plan for reduce, or for reaching at-risk students or students with disabilities. I conclude my comments with this quote from Thomas Jefferson, considered by many the father of public education, about the importance of serving all. "A system of general instruction which shall reach every description of our citizens, from the richest to the poorest, as it was at the earliest, so it will be at the least, of all the public concerns, of which I should permit myself to take an interest."
Thank you very much for your comments. Olivia Abernathy and Tana Keel.
My name is Olivia Abernathy. I am a Madison County Commissioner and I am a parent of two highly virtuous Jackson Madison County students who are excelling in their public school. As a county commissioner, I work for the people that elected me. I'm politically accountable to the constituents in my district. The school board members who voted seven to one to reject this application were also elected by the people of Madison County. They too are to be accountable to their constituents. I've been present at every meeting that this application was voted on, and not once was a representative from the applicant present. They are not accountable to our citizens in the same way. To quote the Tennessee School Board Association, "Local control is essential to the effective operation of school boards. School board members have a unique knowledge of local needs and assets and represent the collective will of the community. Their denial of this application was based on thoughtful consideration of these needs and of the quality of the application. The creation of charter schools is meant to address student achievement when an LEA is unable to produce satisfactory results. As a system, we've risen from the lowest classification to the second highest above and beyond satisfactory under this administration. Our TVA scores have gone from a one to a five. This LEA has fulfilled every requirement of the DOE, they have stretched every dollar given to them, and they are producing results that the community is behind. The same cannot be said of this application. The application simply did not meet the standards in the state's rubric. So with all due respect for your work and your care for our children, I ask this commission to consider, as an unelected body, the precedent that you are setting if you grant this appeal. You will have stripped away local control from an elected body. You will have ignored the voices of the majority of Madison County residents. You will have effectively undermined and punished an LEA who has made giant strides towards success. And you will have lowered the bar of expectation of what Tennessee requires and expects of its educational institutions. There is nothing more big government than that. Thank you."
Thank you. We have Tana Keel and Gail Phillips.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tana Keel, and I am a longtime resident of Madison County, a Union University graduate and self-employed. I'm honored to petition the attending commission for the consideration of the American Classical Academy here in Madison County. We are in great need of such a worthy endeavor. I've raised four children in the Madison County School System who are now adults. I would love to tell you that the hit ratio was one hundred percent and that four out of four were successful outcomes. Unfortunately, that is not the case. Two of my children, who are of high functioning intelligence, have suffered at the hands of the status quo. Special needs programs were implemented by the current educational program over the years. Given the resources a charter school offers, may have produced a different outcome. I am currently raising a granddaughter of whom I have full custody. She is two this week. It is my greatest endeavor to see that she be afforded the best education possible. I believe that is a classical education as she already exhibits an advanced need, and the arts have proven to be a successful learning method within our family unit. As we all know, each child is unique and individualized, and no two are alike. I am widowed and on a set income these days, so my options to provide a private and/or specialized education are limited. Therefore, what is the answer? Old or new? We need our young children to be victorious in a world that is getting harder and harder to navigate. Charter schools will give us as parents, in grim predicaments, the ability to provide choice is currently not available. It will not be an endeavor that we take for granted or commit to lightly. You can count on our support, strength, and loyalty to ensure success of charter schools here in Madison County. Please consider charter schools here so we can afford our children opportunity and the diversity of learning that is an environment that they love to learn in, and that is charter schools.
Thank you. We have Gail Phillips, our last, and then the last, we'll go back to Constance Everie or Shanice Creasy before we wrap up public comments.
I've signed up to speak.
We don't have you on the list. Would you like to go ahead?
Okay. Good morning. My name is Gail Phillips. I am a recently retired teacher, having taught in the Jackson Madison County School System for twenty-one years. The last seventeen was at Madison Academic where I taught APUS history. I came today to express my hope that you will seriously consider establishing the American Classical Academy here in Madison County. There's definitely a market, for lack of a better word, for a school that uses the classical method. My own daughter, who lives in another state, homeschools her three boys using the classical model mostly based on the program, the well-trained mine. She expressed to me that if they moved back to Jackson, she would definitely be interested in sending her children to a school that utilizes this model. I have personally spoken with several families here in Madison County that have expressed a similar interest. Some are homeschoolers, others are not. We know that children learn very differently. As a teacher, I face that challenge every day. I taught many students who I think would have benefited greatly from learning through the classical method or the classical model. I think families, learning diversity, parents are seeking, would be very, I'm sorry, I messed up, would be beneficial to many children and families who would respond well to this method. In short, I think that many families would welcome this choice of a school that offers the classical program. I hope that serious consideration will be given to this option, as I truly believe it will be a benefit to children, families, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, that concludes the individuals we had signed up in advance. Sir, I apologize, we had fifteen people on the list. Again, we welcome additional written comments. We have paper that you can leave a comment here today. We are accepting comments on this appeal for the next week, so please make sure to get your comments in. All comments that we receive will be posted publicly on our website at the conclusion of our public comment process. We are going to turn to closing statements from the local board and the sponsor. As a reminder, you all will have up to ten minutes. We will do the same where we will set a timer, which will go off when your ten minutes are up. We are going to first recognize Jackson Madison Public School System for their closing statement, and then we will move to the sponsor. And you may begin when you're ready.
Before I begin my closing comment, I would like to make five points. The application submitted to Jackson Madison County, both the original and amended application, listed a different group of board members. Number two, chairperson identified as Delores Gresham, this is the first that we've heard. Number three, no board members from Jackson Madison County on the governing board. That was in the original application. Number four, the capacity to provide services, RITI, and special populations was basically copied and pasted from the Tennessee Department of Education with no specific details on how to serve students. Thank you. And then, let me get this last one. This is the first that we've heard of a facility being identified. The recommendation of Jackson Madison County School System Review Committee to the local Board of Education was to deny the amended application of America Classical Academy. The decision was unanimous and based on a careful review and analysis of both the initial and amended application. The local board appointed a committee. The committee worked hard to really assess the application according to the scoring criteria and assess the application in detail and with fidelity. The totality of the evidence reviewed determined the overall score for each section and each category. Evidence presented today and encountered in the review of the application included some areas of strength within sections and indicators, as well as responses that did not align. I show the preparedness of America Classical Academy Madison to serve all students in the Jackson Madison County School District. Today, we also raised significant concerns relative to the charter's academic focus and design in serving a diverse population of students, providing a continuum of services to students with special populations. No identified facility, no compelling evidence for waiver requests that were aligned to student achievement, no local Madison County representation on the charter board, and lacking a contingency plan to meet financial needs in the early years. Again, the application states the scoring rubric, an application that merits a recommendation of approval should satisfy these criteria. Further, a summary of the findings show that twenty-four of the thirty-one indicators were rated partially meets standards, and only three met or exceeded the standards. All students should have options and opportunities to be successful in public schools. Are we willing to add a charter school with an academic plan that lacks key elements of a public school that serves all students, including the diverse population of students in an inclusive environment? Are we willing to approve a charter school when we do not know a location and can access if it meets all the health and safety standards? Are we willing to approve a charter school with identified barriers that exclude some students and some members of the target population of K-12? We believe that we have outlined and presented evidence that highly supports a vote of denial for American Classical Academy Madison. Jackson Madison County School System is committed to school choice through its open enrollment policy. However, we want those choices to be great opportunities for our families. The American Classical Academy Madison has failed to present clear and convincing evidence of future success. A charter school that merits approval should meet all criteria specified in the state rubric. Our findings do not support that. Madison, American Classical Academy Madison does not offer a choice that enhances the educational options currently offered to families in our school district. One size does not fit all. This charter school should at minimum, one, provide a choice for all K-12 target population, provide a diverse curriculum with supplemental resources, and three, provide programs of study that ensure all students have an opportunity to enroll and experience success. Finally, American Classical Academy's application, again, does not include clear evidence of meeting the criteria with the minimum expectation of educating all students. In closing, the two thousand and nineteen data reported by America Classical Academy Madison application is no longer correct. With the Department of Education providing annual district and school accountability that reflects both performance and growth, Jackson Madison County's two thousand and twenty-two report released this week is outstanding. Today, Jackson Madison County is designated as a Level Five Advancing District, with twelve Level Five schools and four Level Four schools with the highest two levels of academic progress and growth. Nine reward schools exemplifying the highest levels for student success, not only in growth but in achievement. With this unprecedented academic progress in Jackson Madison County School amongst all students, all subgroups, including disadvantaged students and special populations, Jackson Madison County, Jackson Classical Academy failed to meet or exceed the state scoring rubric. We believe, therefore, this is not the time for approval of a charter school. We appreciate your vote of no. Thank you.
Thank you for that closing statement. We will now turn to representatives from American Classical Academy for your closing statement. You have up to ten minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking the commission for facilitating today for the Jackson Madison County School System, for their remarks, and of course, for all the people here in attendance for what we believe is an incredibly important issue. I spent quite a bit of time thinking about what I wanted to say today as we close here on this hearing. I think it would be easy to want to focus on the persistent and consistent deficiencies exhibited by Jackson Madison County Review Team throughout this process. How immediately upon filing its application, ACE reached out to the district asking to meet and discuss the application, but was told that neither Dr. Williams nor Superintendent King had time to meet. How the district's own assessment demonstrates that reviewers misunderstood the applicable standards, failed to thoroughly review the application, initial or amended, and had widely different views on the quality of the application that were never normed or discussed to establish consensus, including scoring multiple sections of the amended application same as initial despite significant revisions made to the amended application and despite all the questions the sponsor addressed in the review committee interview. Perhaps more disconcertingly, the review committee marked the application as partially meets in six sections that were completely inapplicable to American Classical Education despite clear instructions at the top of the application form. Digging into the review provides evidence of a team reviewing without clear instruction and without guidance. Look only to the strengths listed in Section 1.12 of the Parent and Community Engagement Assessment. Of the four reviewers, two found no strengths, citing one page, while two other reviewers found multiple strengths and a rating that was meets. As Jackson Madison County has said today, review committee members were assigned only certain sections of the application to review, yet apparently were then asked to review the entire application without context. Additionally, as we heard today, Jackson Madison County reviewed other schools unaffiliated with ACE as part of their determination. This is highly concerning. Furthermore, statements by review committee member Dr. Vivian Williams made to the media that ACE claimed that eighty percent of our teachers would be Hillsdale graduates, a claim that is neither substantiated by the application or the recorded capacity review, make it clear that fidelity to the application is probably not there. And lastly, how the review team has consistently refused to disclose the results of its own community poll assessing interest in a free public classical education charter model in Jackson Madison, despite requests by ACE for those poll results and a FOIA request made by a concerned community member back in May. What do these poll results show that would make the review team refuse to release these to the public? It would also be easy to want to focus on a school board that has continually tried to inject politics into this process, preferring to grandstand rather than focus on the needs of the children in this community. The Jackson Madison County School Board repeatedly and intentionally tied our application to Hillsdale College. Working session and board meeting agendas and minutes listed the charter as being sponsored by Hillsdale College. ACE noticed this and reached out to Dr. Williams, but was told this was the correct agenda item. In the working session- In the working session, two days before the vote, Board Chair Mr. Darnell explained that he asked Jackson-Madison County Legal Counsel to quote, "Draft a resolution tying American Classical Academy Madison to Hillsdale College." Immediately prior to the board's vote, Dr. Chandler, the lead reviewer, added to this mischaracterization by stating that Hillsdale College submitted a request for a charter school, and that representatives from Hillsdale College attended the capacity interview. The application and the process made it abundantly clear that ACE is a separate entity from Hillsdale College, and the capacity interview was attended by myself, ACE General Counsel, and our principal, all of whom who are here today, and none of whom work for Hillsdale College. Despite the statements having nothing to do with ACE or American Classical Academy, the board also passed a resolution repudiating statements by the president of Hillsdale College. In this resolution, the board stated it is not believed that it is in the best interest of the students in Jackson-Madison County, Tennessee, to be exposed to a charter school with such close ties to Hillsdale College. Why? Despite ACE's multiple offers to Jackson-Madison County to answer any questions or provide any clarification throughout the process, did Jackson-Madison County not once reach out to ACE for clarification on this or any other issue? And lastly, it would be easy to focus on a superintendent who was so unfamiliar with ACE's application that he tweeted out he believes we are a music school, that ACE's president is Dr. Arn, president of Hillsdale College, and who seems more focused on protecting the bottom line of the local private schools, claiming that ACE being in Jackson will quote, "Interfere with our private schools, especially St. Augustine," rather than on creating equity of opportunity for the students in this district. We are confident that the Jackson-Madison County School Systems Review Committee, school board member, and superintendent are good people, who are passionate about the children in this community. I know this personally, because I've met with many of them and spoken with them. It is, however, deeply unfortunate that the process to assess American Classical Academy Madison has been rife with inconsistencies, errors like claiming that we intend to enroll a population that is 80% white when the application clearly states that we intend our projection to have 60% of our students be African-American, and a fundamental insistence to inject politics in the process. But focusing on any of these concerning deficiencies in the review process is not what we should be focused on. As I've spent time in this community, meeting with elected officials, academics, school board members, business owners, and most importantly, with teachers, parents, and grandparents, I've found a community that is proud but frustrated. They care deeply about this community, and they want the best for their children. They see economically disadvantaged children in Memphis and Nashville being given opportunities for choice, and wonder, why are they being told by their school board leaders that this is not appropriate for them? They don't understand why a district that is ranked in the bottom 10 of 95 counties in Tennessee that has made no progress on TCAP scores since 2017 says that a school with ELA and math proficiency scores between 50 and 80% has quote, "Nothing unique or different that they could present to our district that we do not already have." These folks struggle to reconcile how a district that has led Tennessee since 2017 in suspension rate, overtaking even Shelby County, refuses to consider additional public options for students. And they worry when national foundations like the Annie E. Casey Foundation release data and analyses that show Madison ranks last in the state in overall well-being for children. And they are concerned as they see students being taught by a revolving team consisting of substitutes, teacher assistants, and teachers using their planning time to monitor teacherless classrooms. And they see the growth coming, the trucks that go by every 30 seconds carrying dirt for Blue Oval City, and wonder how a district that does not have funds for growth, that is struggling to pay for $50 million new Pope Elementary School, would turn down a school that would save taxpayers up to $50 million? As a county commissioner asked me, how will we deal with this influx of students coming in the next few years? Dr. Marlon King has publicly said repeatedly that he hopes the commission does not ignore the voices of this community, and we agree. You've heard from the majority of people here today who have spoken what the residents of Madison County want. The many support letters in our application, the people filling this room, make it clear. We urge the commission to listen to these community members. We urge the commission to listen to these grandparents and parents. And we urge the commission to listen to these children. This is who the school is for. The people you heard from today aren't asking for much, for their kids and their community. They're asking for a chance, for an opportunity, for a choice. A way to have some option in this community where right now, the only choice for many families is no choice at all. We ask the commission to judge us not on politics, not on fear of competition, but on the qualifications and merits of our application. And we are confident that we will provide a first-class public classical charter school education for all families and all students in this community who desire and demand this option. Thank you.
Thank you for that closing statement. And before we adjourn, I want to make a few final reminders. Again, we're accepting public comments for my recommendation for the next week. We need those in by 1:00 PM Central Time on September 22nd to be included in my recommendation. Again, the commission will meet to hear this appeal, along with six other charter school appeals, on October 5th. That meeting is in Nashville. It is in person. It is open to the public. There will be public comment periods and sign-up opportunities for that meeting as well. Details about the meeting, exact location for the meeting within Nashville, and how to sign up for a public comment will be available on the commission's website. I appreciate everyone being here today. I appreciate the members of the public who joined us and spoke. Thank you so much to both of the parties for your presentations and information today. With no further business on the agenda, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you all so much.